Now we're ready.
Thank you, everyone. It's at this time I will call to order the City of Bellevue Common Council Meeting. It is Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five, at five thirty one P. M. This is a reminder, please turn off all cell phones, mute them, except for emergency personnel. And if you're on Zoom, mute until you're called upon. Amy, will you take your calls?
Andrew Donnie?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Openar?
Yes.
Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with the Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four. Within forty hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall Post Office and on the city's website until September fourth, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion that the notice for September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting was posted in accordance to Idaho Code seventy four dash two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Call for conflict. As outlined in Idaho Code seventy four dash four zero four, any conflict? Tonight's agenda?
None for me.
Oh.
I might have a conflict. I don't know how long I'll be able to say.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Strap in.
Okay.
Go over ready for the ride.
Our mayor and council report, I'll get us started off. I just, again, wanted to echo the thank yous for all the contribution for the amazing Labor Day festivities. Two really fabulous days of the community coming together and showing city pride and then also getting to show off a little bit to our neighbors around us about what great things we have going on down here. The parade was a really great variety of people participating. We had, you know, men riding blow up dinosaurs and young kids participating in the library float. So that was really fun to see. Great lineup of music. So thank you to the Mahonies, to Kim Stocking, everyone else who volunteered and participated. And I was really happy to see the museum alive with activity. I might have spent a little bit too much at the antique sale, loved a lot of things there. The celebration with the laying of the flowers and the memorial there and kind of the activities of the park. It was nice to see the Bellevue Historical Society invigorated and alive, so.
I'm sure they appreciate your money as well.
It's a people change, so. Just thank yous all around the community and everyone at the table and in the room who participated. City of Bellevue had a nice presence with some of, with our library, media development department. I know Shelly was there and our Marshall, so thank you for having a presence there as well. I just wanted to bring something up that some may have seen in the news. There was a press release out with Congressman Simpson, the allocation of a four million dollar grant that has gone through House Appropriations Committee and needs to go through the Senate Appropriations Committee. This is under the community project funding. It was something that Chris Johnson had started the conversation with and then myself, Chris Johnson and Christina from Mayor kept going. And we are in the final rounds of that coming through, so fingers crossed. If that goes, that'll, that could reduce the burden on citizens for the bond. So that would offset that. So that's four million or everything's crossed right now, but everything goes well on that. So a lot of collaborative effort and a few years of getting that to the finish line. So that'd be great if it comes through and we will keep everybody in the loop. Press releases sometimes go out before we communicate, but I wanted to make sure you guys hear that from us and we'll keep the conversation going on that. Love to pass it around the table and see if there's anything happening in your respective categories that you would like to discuss. So I'll start with Jessica and Jessica.
No updates for me, but feedback scavenger hunts for free ice cream. If you want to have children involved, we're definitely like for first, first Brian. Yeah, the kids were like really.
Our children were very excited.
Yeah.
Amy, long lines.
They didn't even do all of it, but it was like, oh, we should have more, more of this. That was great. Also, just general feedback from everyone in the community about the parade and the festivities. They said this is the best Bellevue event they've been to in years. So like, way to go, everyone participated in it. No housing update for me. And I love the banner that is up on Main Street in Bellevue because we haven't had a banner up in, for so long. And so thank you, team, for getting that up.
What does it say?
High for Hope. It's the
Oh, oh.
Yep, and a fee was paid for the banner to go up over Bellevue.
Nice, nice.
Didn't ask for a fee labor.
No, we just paid it. Casey put it up. Thanks, Casey.
Yeah. I think I need to say something. Okay. I don't have anything to speak of. I don't even know what I'm supposed to be, honestly.
That's okay.
Just with media development stuff, what have you, but nothing in particular feeling. I, I would like to ask something before I forget. It's for, and it's stuff that I guess we all do. On the website, on the City of Bellevue's website, there is only a picture of the mayor in Suzanne. And I think it's really important that, I mean, I know there's pictures of all of us in the past and the future. I would choose one for me that was twenty years old, please. And I would just like, I don't care that anybody gets surprised when they see me. I don't care. But yeah.
I made enough to get there.
Yeah, we, we, yeah.
We do need to do that.
Thank you very much. And I just think that's important for us when people sees.
Thank you.
But I did, and I did have a great time at the Labor Day festivities. I was there both Sunday and Monday and, yeah, it was good. It was a good turnout. It was nice to see people and, yeah. You guys did a great job.
Great work and great music.
Did a great job. I'm really happy. I even brought my mother, who has not been to the Labor Day festivities in over fifteen years. She walked down with me. I saw this, it's actually an event and, yeah, it was, it was good, wonderful.
Suzanne?
Uh, no update for me.
Okay. Sean, anything?
Yes, sorry, he said anything already. It was, uh, it was really fun. I especially like whipping candy out to kids. Usually I'm here to hide, you know, help the kids take more candy. But I was like, I was whipping it. I was, this is great. Watch the kids go crazy. It was fine. That's really fine.
Tom, anything on parks or?
Maybe only one kind of comment that I got from a constituent, I guess I'd say, was whether anyone from the city participates in a local emergency planning committee?
Yes.
Web speed.
Okay. I mean, I know they had, they still have their meetings in Alcorn and so it's a little bit of a giant to go up there.
They have them at the, uh, at the sheriff's office. Chris Coram owns them. They usually, they were monthly, they've gone to more quarterly after COVID. But the chief is still going on them, I believe. Marshall is, and I just got the invite for the next ones.
Just a question about our involvement with that.
Sure.
We had Aaron Hugely, is that correct pronunciation? On P and Z, he does home inspections. He has inspected the building. You probably saw the email. And it, ahead of us getting it painted. And there, there are some issues with the aging logs. And so we're kind of moving forward, next steps to get some restoration work lined up. Get some painting lined up and, and so that's moving forward. Which I'm very, very happy to see. It's been years that this building has needed a little bit of love. And, I'm sorry?
Can I add on to that real quick?
Absolutely.
So after we spoke today, I went down to LEED Restoration. They're gonna come take a sample of the chinking for asbestos. And once we have that, they can do a full quota on what it's gonna cost for the whole thing.
Perfect. And Bura did budget for this, so. And then late this afternoon, I had a meeting with a potential very positive meeting, someone that's interested in sitting on Bura. And so stay tuned for that. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. And that is, we do have one Bura seat still left open to fill. And we have a events committee seat open at this time, and those are the, the current committee openings. And Parks Committee is looking for more members if there's interest there. They're, they're good where they are, but I know that there's a call out for more members if anyone has a desire to serve on that committee. So thank you all for your update.
Sure.
I will move on to item number four, public comment. This is for items of concern, not on the agenda. If you are inside City Hall and would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, feel free to raise your hand as well. I've seen any hands. I will go ahead and close public comments. Consent agenda, item five. We have handful of items on here, approval of minutes, approval of claims, pressures report, department head reports, water project update for Merrick, and approval of an alcohol license from the Marshall. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'd like to ask that the water project that we pulled out so we can discuss it or we can discuss it. I just had some questions of.
Why don't we go ahead and pull that, pull that out? Or I mean, if there are questions to ask, yeah, if it feels like it, I'll let you know if I feel like we need to pull it out.
Okay. I was surprised just because I haven't seen any other maps that there was discussion of the deliverable of an existing conditions easement map. Because I haven't seen the conditions map. And easement maps would traditionally follow a, a conditions map. So I wasn't sure if that was already available.
So the question is if there is a conditions map available?
Well, yes, there's in one point three, they talk about an existing conditions easement map. And I have not seen the condition of the existing conditions map. And I don't believe that you can really have the easement map until you have the conditions map. So I was wondering where that, when that was presented or where that is or where we could see it.
I have a personal fund to start.
I, I think you're combining words that aren't really meant to be combined. They're talking about the existing condition of the easements, not necessarily the existing conditions of the overall property. Is that what you're?
I'm referring to really the recognized term of existing conditions as a map versus existing condition easement map. Those are actually recognized terms, so I maybe it is being used in the way you're suggesting, but.
I mean, so you're asking that there's, there's in conditions map. And I would, I would take that as this is the existing conditions of the property and the system.
So the existing conditions map traditionally would be what we were preparing to build. We would be requesting permits against that map. And then an easement map would be on top of that evaluating what land and, and what permissions to do, like we would need, just traditionally.
I think what they are referring to is the easements are basically written out right now. There is no easement map. They are written out in the sections and flats. So it's all in, in description form, so there is no hand plotted map or anything that shows these are the So they've taken all the handwritten notes and then surveyed based off of those notes what they will be, are the existing easements.
So I will, I made a note to look into the existing conditions map, but I am in agreement with Chris that the discussion when I did talk to Christina from Merrick that this is more, this is in relation to the easement map. So it could be a bit of just the way it's worded, but I will get, we will get clarification from Merrick that they expressly meant the existing conditions of the easement map and that there's not, it's not being referred to as the existing conditions map and then the easement portion.
And so this isn't so pertinent to the project per se. It's just like mapping the entirety of
The easement.
Molded can and easement. Well, okay, I don't know that you could know what easements you would need without knowing where you were.
There are certain easements out there.
And sign more.
And but within those easements, we have the opportunity to move within a ten acre parcel. And so we need to identify where the current easement's placed so we can say if we need to move anything, say out wetlands or maybe to better elevation or off the property altogether. And so this is what this initial map is supposed to be.
Yes, it's still falling under the initial easement portion.
So there's, we don't have any plans per se. This is documenting this. Yes, okay, thank you.
But thank you for clarifying about the existing commission, conditions map. We'll look into it, make sure that we are understanding correctly the way that Merrick has explained it to us. Thank you.
Maybe kind of a similar question on the water and the Merrick report. They, I mean, I kind of had that same question. It sounded like, you know, September twenty twenty five, they'll divide this map of existing conditions and anyway, I guess we'll see.
Okay, well, good.
But, but the second question then was, they, they talked about SOTU completing the land survey work and producing a boundary survey. This is the first deliverable. But I actually was a little surprised by that. I kind of thought maybe, given the fact that they've been working all summer up there, that, that this would have been delivered by now, but maybe they've offered some explanation for why that isn't quite that ready.
So I don't think they got into actually surveying it until after the Fourth of July. And then Merrick reviewed the initial surveys from SOTU, then they identified a few other structures and stuff that they wanted to get recaptured. So the team had to go back out and now they're just finishing compiling that. They should have it by the end of one or the next council meeting.
That's imminent, Dan.
Yes.
Any other questions on consent agenda?
On a public works report, on the water meter project, it talked about several older meters have been identified as non-functional. Is that a few or is that ten percent or do you have a sense of how, how many that, I would say less than, less than one hundred percent? One that we just recently found out, uh, Full Creek Hotel. It's just an older version of a meter. We've already ordered the parts. We'll probably have that changed out here by the end of the month. You know, some of these are like the one at the trailer park. It's down on a hole, eight, ten feet. So we actually have to reach down with our phones. We have to do our visible, visual, visual read on it. Have to take our phones down there, zoom in on it to get a good capture and we want to change that round. But for the most part, the meters that we've been looking at, the residents are working properly. And we felt pretty comfortable. We've got another list today from Cassell. It's matching up with Neptune and we're, we're making progress every day. Several is just a few essentially, they're not, not five percent or ten percent or. And then this one also just kind of referred to the new procedures for resident notification and updated emergency response plan. And is that a work in progress that we'll see something that kind of more detail?
So we completed, the last one was done in twenty twenty and they're, they're due for renewal every five years, but with our changeover, I've been working on it. I'm pretty close to having it finished and just identifying a few of our, uh, like who to reach out for plumbing and just identifying which people we actually want to have on our on-call list, who we want to work with and who we have good relationships with. And then coming up with SOPs on how we disseminate information to staff so we can get it out to the rest of the residents.
And some of that's just a response to our experience.
Yes, and so, um, the clerk and I have been working on our overall communications SOP and then Public Works Department is putting together categorical ones for, for example, a hydrant replacement or certain types of work. And then they, there is an already existing emergency response plan that is getting updated with current contact information and communications. That will, the SOPs will end up on the website and we're also happy to bring them to council once they've been completed. Our one is very close and based on Chris, Chris's update, we should have everything together here shortly.
That's the only question I had. I had a, a few questions on the, on the pressures report, but I'll follow up with Shelly.
I do have a couple of things on Chris's report. Sorry, Chris. On, on the wastewater side, it says there's a delay was caused by an incorrect actuator shipment. And I'm just curious if that's how on track we are with that as well as the reuse permit to be expected to be ready for submission to DEQ by September fifteenth.
I'm just wrapping up the reuse permit right now, going back through it. And so we're really close. I should have that done next week and be able to submit at least the draft version, version two DEQ for them to review and if they want to make any changes before we submit the files. As far as the actuator, yeah, they sent us.
What is an actuator?
So you have a valve that controls flow, an actuator, a electronic control that controls the valve. So if I need to turn off the valve, run the status system, I don't have to get the plant. I can do it from the state. It lets the actuator know that turn on, turn off, that it turns on, turns off the valve. So what had happened is two type tens got, or three type tens got delivered and we only needed two type tens and two type thirties. We're still waiting on one type thirty, but it's not a necessity. We can start the plant without it. But the second type thirty came in, I just took it out and planned this afternoon and we'll be getting it installed this weekend. So we're making good progress there.
Okay, lastly, the parks, buildings and grounds side, there's discussion or just a, a report in here about frost rehydrant and it being evaluated to either replace or remove it because it no longer is necessary for irrigation. Is that something you're working with Beavon? Do, for the necessity of that hydrant being there or?
So the frost rehydrants are the ones that come out four or five feet to have the handle.
With the handle, yep.
And so what's happened down there, kids, whoever's been playing with it, keeps it on and off, on and off. And now it's got to the point where it's been dripping on and off. I got it turned off a couple of weeks ago, but after Labor Day, they were doing some water balloon fights and it got to a point, there's no way to turn it off. We can't turn off the valve that runs that because somebody took, there's a four inch pipe where she'll reach down, drop the valve, it's down about five feet. They put a perfect sized rock, it's perfectly flat, got it down that hole and there's no way to get that rock out. So I can't turn it off the valve. So our options are to excavate, remove the rock, turn the valve off. And at that point, we can remove the hydrant or replace it. It obviously didn't get winterized at some point and since it was leaking, it would get water up the head and the head is cracked. And so now even with the, I put a, another valve line to stop dripping, but now it comes out of the crack. So I'm looking at working with one of our excavation teams, companies and getting that taken care of here next week or two. But I was gonna ask the council, you feel that we need a water spigot out there? Or since we have pressurized irrigation there now, can we abandon that?
Yeah. And, and mayor, I would like to have more discussion on that moving forward. So I understand this is a consent agenda item. So if this is something we need to pull to discuss later on in the evening.
Would you like to discuss it more today?
I.
On the further, once Chris brings back the options.
I would prefer to discuss today and get your option because then I can decide what you guys want to do.
I said, let's just keep the discussion going right now.
Okay. The only thing I will say about that hydrant, or maybe it's that frost free, or maybe they're one of the same, is that in, in the past, we flooded a section of the park and had this sweet little skating rink that a lot of kids used. And so I'm just curious, you know, I, I'm just weighing in on that, that, you know, if that's an option to keep it, might be something to look at down the road, but.
We discussed it within Public Works. The maintenance and the upkeep and trying to keep people and people being people and using it. And we've had people come in and just start, they lay out a giant tart plastic and they were doing slip and slide. Looked like a lot of fun, but they didn't get a perk permit to do it. They had over fifty people. I did talk to them and they came in and they, they rectified that and they're still using it, but they're not using it. I was there Monday after that. We feel that it's no longer needed. I discussed the fact that, you know, people need water for their pets, but if you're walking your pet, you know, maybe she carries the water with you if you feel that your pet will need water at some point during your walk. For the amount of upkeep and the potential risk to the community, you know, they're, they're having a water balloon fight out there and two kids bump heads. They're in our park using our water. Are we liable now? Did they get a park permit? So we feel that it is probably of the best interest of the city since we do have irrigation out there now and that the ice rink was never properly stored and is no longer serviceable. So it is no longer needed.
What about, I mean, every, typically every park that I've been to, like or library, has like some sort of service. Is there another access for water there that can use or so if we have events? You know, and, or maybe it's an event where they just want water.
Thought being, since we still have to identify some of our park funds for one of the projects that were identified, is there a way to move it? Because I like the fact that there's water access for people there, but the placement is also kind of odd where it is just right in the grass. So is there a way to move it closer to the, uh, the party pad area there? So it's more like a water fountain or something like that moving forward? Because I don't know, I find value in having water at a park.
Anything, anything's attainable or direct money.
I'm just thinking, you know, a couple of the things that were identified for use there. One of, one of them being having people have grill access, which we talked about and not having.
And I'm not opposed to, if we could move it, we can move it closer to the pavilion and we can put a lock on it like we do with the dumpster. So when they rent the park and they want water access, they can get their key and they are liable and they'll have it, deposit it, they break it.
Marshall, you have your hand up?
I like the lock idea. I like having water there and it's mainly because I do a unsanctioned event, an unpermitted event. Most, most year at the end of the school year, I challenged the fifth grade class to a water balloon fight. So I'm responsible for partying a lot of the time. So I like having the water there just because I like the water balloon.
Did you get a permit for that?
I didn't know.
Good to know. I'll keep that ready for your evaluation.
Yeah, I, I think that we should move it and lock it. Skate rinks, we, I was there for the get go. It was so hard to do. We don't have the facility, the ice making, you know, it's
Well, weather is a factor too.
Realistically, we got maybe four weeks out or maybe. And if the weather's crappy or it's too much snow, that's the worst part, just too much snow, you get a shovel. Who can shovel it? See, you know, we, you're not gonna have time.
No, this is what I wanted is your feedback. We will look at relocating closer to the pavilion. So it's more in a general area and then we can lock it. And if we want to, in the future, we can come up with some sort of drinking fountain and pet fountain idea. Maybe that is part of the community property.
Yeah. So then it sounds like the sentiment is to keep it, move it, lock it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's nothing else. It depends on when that has to be fixed and what the timing, if it needs to just be reinstalled and blocked. It stays and then we relocate at a different time.
If I have to excavate down once, it's easier to excavate down once, move it, so I'm gonna have to carry the line over there.
Yeah.
And then put anyone in. So there's no use taking it up twice if we're gonna move it once.
I just think right, right back where the asphalt meets the grass somewhere over there has a, you know, that it's not in the way. I've got to be, if you're playing crispy out there, you're running around and it's a pole that you can run right into, so.
So there's another, there's a second one on the west end on Elm Street. It's about midway again, it's right in the middle of the grass, kind of by the little thicked areas are. That one, the valve on it has been filled in with gravel, dirt, whatever's gonna throw down in there. And it's been turned off. Do we want that one still or can we re-put it out?
Can I ask the history on these? Were they, were they meant to be just water access or they meant to be fountain?
They are irrigated.
Bet you're good. Okay, thank you.
And it was a mess.
I agree.
Hard.
Uh, what are your, your guys' thoughts? Abandon that one, renovate that one again?
Abandon it. Abandon it.
Okay.
It's not being used anyway. No one knows it's there anymore. It's not being used anyway, no one knows it's there anymore.
Yeah, and then just thinking like, forward thinking, if we were to do a fountain. And how they have it set up for like, I just used the community library fountain today. It'd give you really difficult to fill up water balloons with those fountains. They're like, they get how the water comes out, it's designed that way. So people don't just take water, that's one less thing to think about managing. And you just turn it on and then you turn it off, like turn on, getting in season and turn it off.
Tom, has this come up at all at the Parks Committee discussions?
Uh, no, it hasn't actually come up, I feel like, I go.
Kristen has emailed me about the one that's. Okay, that we know about.
I mean, I, I share the opinion that having some water there is a good thing. There's another location, I mean, I might, might even send them a little note to say this is one location I think be favorable, but I agree, near that pavilion is. And having some live water is a good thing, I did see the people that were using the water slide and they seem to be enjoying themselves over there. How much water they use, but, um, still, I, you know, I think, I think there's value there.
And I mean, the second one could be of use, like, thinking about population growth and. Park is used more frequently, the larger events having to access points for water could be beneficial, but.
Would that one need to be excavated and same thing?
Oh, that'd be either, well, if you guys wanna buy me a valve, I'd say I can trailer it right and suck out all the dirt. Um, we might be able to take the valve and see if it actually works, but until I have something like that, um.
In college suites, they, they do that and so it's starting to base.
Yeah.
But that.
That one, if we were to use it, would need to be moved to.
Yeah, I mean, that's closer to the sidewalk, it's closer to an end, but, um, I still think it would be a better location.
Suzanne, Diane?
No, I don't have enough information, I don't like to make that to be, uh, that I couldn't know what, how the different ways that it's been used. The, the myriad of ways it's been used in the past or what existing plans for those areas might benefit for, so I'm sorry, I don't have anything to contribute.
Okay, you've got enough direction to kind of move forward with the plan now, but at least a little more. Okay, thank you very much, any other questions on the consent agenda? Go on the second thing, come clear.
Councilmember Obana?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Virgil?
Yes.
Councilmember Neshay?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on to item six, this is our wastewater plant project update. Um, you have a memo in your packet here from Andrew Fimmel and he has found us as well on Zoom. I know we touched on it a little bit in the, um, Public Works Department head update, but Andrew, do you wanna just? Run us through a little bit, um, of the project update and then we'll have some questions from council.
So, thank you everyone for, uh, giving me the time tonight for this. Um, I did want to bring a little bit of attention to the schedule, um, on that third page. I changed the format a little bit just to keep, keep things as clear as we could. Um, when this thing started and we started tracking everything in July, we had to make some pretty big assumptions. As to when different parts and pieces would arrive, how that would impact the schedule, so. In the anticipated completion date, originally, we just put that date and left it. Um, what we're going to do moving forward is on each one of these updates, um, we'll update that. So if it's in red, that means it has been delayed or slid back from what our initial anticipation was. Um, and so you'll see there's quite a few items that are in red and. I, what, what that means is we're behind our original schedule. However, it is not impacting our final completion date. So, most of these items all have to do with. Um, some form of electronics, whether that's the electrician getting some wiring in. Or getting them connected, or the SCADA system having to be turned on. There's, there's some tie to the physical electrical component that we have not been able to test or verify. And so because of that, that schedule has slid. And thi- this current week and next week are very, very critical work weeks on the electrical and the SCADA. Um, so that we can have everything in place and ready for when Viola shows up to do the testing. So I wanted to put that in there so you guys knew that, um, there's a big lift over the next two weeks. The other item is, um, item number sixteen, I wanna make sure it's sixteen on here. Um, sorry, it is item twelve, the aeration basins, the crews have been out there trying to clean them. It's been a, a topic multiple times with that truck. You know, being able to load it up with sludge, haul it up and dispose of it, being able to get all the, the debris that's in there out. Um, last week, Chris contacted me and he and Bryson were pretty concerned about. The equipment that the city has even being capable of removing it, and as we found, it was not. So, we helped Chris get in touch with a contractor that has the equipment, has the skills, has done this before. Um, they actually showed up today and in about three hours, I think it was, from what Chris said, they were able to clean one entire basin. And when I say clean, it is like spotless down to bare concrete, um. This was the material that was too compact and too dense for the city to physically remove it themselves. So, um, that is extremely important to get done. The, the long-term impacts of that is if that sludge that has been in there for the last two years wasn't removed. Eventually, it would start breaking down and it could trigger other issues with the treatment plant, it could clog the membranes. Um, it could send a septic load through them that would cause some treatment issues. So that contractor, uh, really coming out with about a week's notice and just getting out to the site to get everything cleaned up is. Is a really big deal for once Viola is in. Cause that's kind of that last big item of things that we couldn't test, were in those basins and. Um, if everything goes the way it did today, they'll be cleaned by the end of this week and we'll be able to test that remaining equipment. So that's, that's a really big deal, um, and so just gotta hand it to the guys doing everything they could to make it. So someone else could in there, get in there and do that last, you know, heavy big lift, um. But had you hired a contractor to do everything the city did, it still would have taken them multiple weeks. So there was still a significant savings just based on the city's own manpower and, and your contract operator, so. Um, those are the big things that are in the works and kind of where it's at, but the next, like I said, the next two weeks are going to be. Really, really critical, um, and then on that, I will actually be out there next Monday, I'm gonna do a site inspection and walk through. Um, with Chris and just see where things are at, take some pictures. So that next update will have a little more graphical representation of what that whole facility looks like now. Um, and I wanna point out some of the, what I will call upgrades that the crews have done. For long-term improvements to help that system and help the plant itself just be a little more operational. So I wanna document that for the city, uh, for the council and just the general public to see that this isn't, this isn't just to fix it, it's fix it for the, the long term.
Thank you, Andrew, any questions on memo or anything that Andrew's referenced in his update?
Uh, Andrew, are, what are the estimates or are these costs for the sludge removal, uh, part of what's covered already?
Um, we'd have to defer to Chris, I, the, they couldn't really give us a cost. Because they had to get out there and start working, um, like I said, it was three hours today on the one basin. They actually went back into Twin Falls, um, to get some other equipment to make it even faster. But I would expect in the thousands, maybe ten to twelve thousand. It's, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be in the thirties or forties, we're, we're probably talking two to three days worth of work for a couple guys. With the right equipment. Uh, but Chris can give you a better ha- handle on that, cause he was discussing it directly with the, the contractor.
Yeah, we're looking probably, I think Andrew's in the ballpark, both between eight and fifteen thousand. Um, but what it would have taken us probably six weeks and, um. We, we would have been using a bucket and, and shovels down from there, um, we'd have been going down a ladder that's twenty, twenty-two feet deep. All in up one bucket loaded at a time, here we have a back truck, they're getting down in there and I was very impressed, um. We've got, we've got boulders that are, you know, six to eight inches in diameter that I got pushed in there from. Uh, Fort Piling operations, they're over the years, I mean, the, these trains have not been cleaned in probably fifteen years and so this is long overdue. Um, so this is just one luxury from us going down is we have access to actually clean these out. Um, it is an expense, but I think it's gonna be covered by the overall, uh. Reversment that we put in I-CRIP, I did put in extra, uh, I told them we would be doing this. And that was, I had to put in one final estimate last month of, I did put in, uh, twenty grand for this, so we should be good.
Great, I, I would just like to clarify, when I ask a question, I've been so good, I'm trying not to ask about anything. I, I'm not suggesting that it's inappropriate to hire a contractor, I happen to be very in favor of contractors. I was aware and I had concerns that there would be sludge in these basins that need to be removed and that it would be extra expense. And how would we prepare for that and put it into the plan? I'm simply trying to get, I'm simply trying to get a number on, not trying to question whether you should use contractors or not, so.
I'm not sure why you interpreted either of those responses as questioning that.
I don't, it's not questioning, I just, I, I would really appreciate, since I'm really trying to be succinct with my inquiries. And I've already stated many of the things that are restated back to me, I don't wanna waste your time. In having to reiterate and explain all the additional work, I am in favor of what's being done, I'm simply trying to extract. Little pieces of information for my own justification, okay, and.
I think there's value for everyone on council though, to hear Chris's robust responses and if that's not your preferred response, that's okay. Glean what you want out of it, I think you asked a great question and we got two good answers out of it, so was your question answered? Did you have a follow-up question?
Well, then maybe we can keep some continuity in the process, because when I bring these things up originally, I'm told no, they won't be needed. Cause cell is free, all of these types of things, and so I don't know that we have to re-go back and, and create a, a backstory for all of this. Is all I guess I'm saying, so I appreciate that this has been done, we knew that there, or I thought we should know that there would be sludge. Uh, in these basins, which was probably part of the stench and things like that, that it would be dense. And that this work could be necessary, I was simply trying to see, as you pointed out, that it sounds like maybe I-CRIP will be covering it and, and that's great. So when we look at the, at the financials for the enterprise funds, we'll, we'll know where, how or what that money was spent.
Was your question answered? I wanna make sure, cause was your question answered?
Cause I believe that I have a sign to cover it, okay, that's my understanding.
Great, and I just wanna make it clear that our department heads and our contractors have every right to respond to a question, how they'd like to answer it. And as long as you're getting your question answered, I think you also need to respect it, how they're responding to questions. You, I mean, everyone has every right to ask what questions they want of contractors and department heads. But just because you don't like the narrative doesn't mean that the answer's incorrect.
I don't think we should go down this path, because a number of things that have been reported that change every time I ask the question is something I don't think any of us wanna go into. All I'm suggesting is, I am trying to be respectful of the, of the process here and be as quiet as I can. And I really just think if you just have the same respect backward, just get, answer the question. And not a retelling of what changed from before.
I think, again, you are making a choice to communicate the way you wanna communicate. I think our department heads and our contractors have the right to communicate they want, the way they wanna communicate.
Do we revisit anything as, as part of this?
Do you have a follow-up question?
Not pertaining to this, but since we're talking about something about style and.
Yeah, I, I would like to know.
Well, no, I just, go ahead, Tammy.
I, I just wanna ask for clarification, Mr. Kimmel, the, on, uh, line item number eighteen. Where it talks about the SCADA system replacement, need a system, and I just wanna make sure I understand. Cause I know we, when we make notes, sometimes this might not be appropriate or doesn't deliver the message, I'm, I'm hoping. SCADA system replacement, need a system to take over the plant control, current system is no longer serviceable.
So, what that is, is you, you guys have a SCADA system out there that came with the plant itself. So did that original design fifteen years ago, um. The software program with that is not serviced by anyone. So the manufacturer that, um, sold it to the city, the people that wrote the codes. If there's a hiccup or a problem with it, there's no one to call to get it corrected. It, the plant literally just stops working and so. Um, part of this changeover with the SCADA system is to go to one that can actually be serviced. It's a local service provider rather than a national one, so it's a local company, um, which is ACS. And the other thing that ACS does with their code, they use what's called open coding. Um, and so that code is not proprietary to a manufacturer. If you guys decide to turn around and hire, you know, some other SCADA provider, you know, five years down the road. They will have access to that internal coding, your current codes with the SCADA system are proprietary. So ACS themselves can't even go in and manipulate it to correct the, the glitch. And so that's part of that changeover, um, and because they couldn't power up part of the facility to, to the existing SCADA. ACS couldn't transfer or cross-connect the wires from one panel to the new panel. Um, cause they wouldn't know which ones were live and which ones were working, so rather than ACS work for a couple hours. And then come back again, they just said, hey, let's just delay it, let's give the electricians more time to complete their work. So that when we come out, we can spend full days there and actually just get it done. Um, otherwise, they would, the timeline for getting it completed would still be the same, we would just have additional trips. That were outside of the original scope of work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
By local, is that like Woodger Valley local or Magic Valley?
Boise, matter, um, right, and I believe they are.
Yeah, they're based out of Boise, um, but they service. All over the state of Idaho, they have about twenty-five employees, um, and in Idaho, they're probably the largest SCADA provider. For municipalities, so they do, most of them in the area, they're doing Haley's, they're doing some in Sun Valley, so they're, they're doing Twin Falls. They're working in your region almost daily, so they're, they're about as local as you can get for the type of system you guys need.
Any other questions for Andrew on the update?
Does this contractor that did the work in the last few days, did, sounds like great work in the last few days? Do they clean out ports for frost freeze in city parks?
Uh, actually, yes, their backer truck could do that, but after it's been in the sewer plant. We might wanna chlorinate everything really, really well before they, you ask them to go over there and suck that, that down. Um, but it is the same equipment that, that would do that as well.
If there are no other questions for Andrew, I think we'll move on to our next agenda item. Andrew Kimmel, great last, thank you so much for joining us, I appreciate it.
Cute.
Okay, item seven, we have a couple presentations. Um, first, we have item A, our transportation plan update from Maria Fowler from. Sorry, Forest Green Associates, and I know she's joining us on Zoom here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, I appreciate your time tonight too. Um, I just wanna give you a quick update, we did have a meeting, um, back in the end of July. And so that, I just go to summary of what happened in that meeting, um, we did talk about your typical sections. Uh, which talks about the right of way, if your street. We did talk about your typical sections, uh which talks about the right of way, if your street right of ways of your current roads. Um some of them are fifty feet, some are sixty feet wide, and some of them are eighty feet wide. Um we're just continuing with what you already have designed in there to put in this transportation plan, like we're not doing any changes, we're just putting what's in there. Uh one of the notes we do have in there, um is that possible for future developments? Um if you're using a sixty-foot right of way for their residential streets. Um with the, with the curb and gutter, um that you also be mindful that stormwater treatment will also probably required. Um mostly because if you put that curb and gutter in there, you you're directing water somewhere, so then you should treat that stormwater. Uh the other parts for the road improvements, um. The city core roads need to make sure we have slopes in there, which some of this is is just, we talked about. Um the slopes seem to be in there to help maintain where their water is directing. I'm thinking like stormwater. Um during that runoff season, or or whenever you have um. Snow and the snow's melting, or any of the rain. Um. We also noted in there that I think it was Spruce Street um gets floods because of the open space around that. So then keeping that in mind as you're looking for um. Future growth or developments to to guide the water where we want the water to go. Uh we talked about four different growth, potential growth areas. Um so one is up by Curly Street, uh the second one is north of Spruce Street. Uh the third one is by uh the Straw Horn subdivision, and the fourth is possibly along um Gannett Street towards the south. And these are just looking at where the growth could go. Um there's obviously more to it than that. This is just big picture. This is not fine details like annexing, nothing like that. And the next part we really talked about was a maintenance plan, the capital improvement plan and a multimodal plan. And with that, I want to share um maps that we have put together. We're also using these same maps for the public meeting. That is on Wednesday, so I'd like to share. Yeah, just want to make sure you can see these maps. I'm like, it's different using Zoom or Teams. Each one's always different. I want to make sure that you can see those.
We can see them, but we can't really.
Yeah, we know it's up on the screen, but we can't really see it.
Well, I can zoom in, that part I can change myself.
We can zoom.
I'm not sure how slow the Zoom update is for when I zoom in there. All right, is that a little better so you can kind of sort of see it better? Perfect. I appreciate the feedback on there. Like, these, these will be big poster size, so that it will be great for um. People to actually look at them. I will leave them with you, so you will have them. Uh this is something we talked about last, uh the last time I came to the city council was remaining service life, so this is the same figure. Um. We just try to clean it up so that it looks, it looks better. Um so meaning like where the road names are, that kind of thing, the the actual assessment is still the same. Nothing has changed for this specific map. I'm going to kind of scroll down. This next one is, um again, we talked about this last, the last city council meeting that I attended as well. Talking about um the maintenance that needs to be, could be completed on your s- uh street signs and your posts. I mean, the green is nothing that needs to be contained, uh needs to be worked on, or the blue is straightened post, the yellow is straightened sign. So uh honestly, you've got really great signs in the area at the moment. I must, so this was the assessment we did last December. So if anything has changed since then, I couldn't tell you. And then this is uh our capital improvement plan. Um so it's looking at which roads we have identified as being the top four priorities um to work on. Uh rebuilding of some sort. This is to help try to look at one funding that's available. Um try to get grant money. I'm always willing to come and get some grant money to help you rebuild the roads. That is what this priority is trying to do for that, is set up these, these four specific roads. Um. And that's, we have them listed in order of Pine is our, is the first priority, Second Street is the second priority, Elm is the third priority. And then that Fifth Street, which is green, is your fourth priority. Do you have questions so far? I should have asked as I was going along. Somebody's, I think we've seen, so I just want to make sure if there's any other questions. All right.
Yeah.
So this is a new map for you, so I try to keep it big so you can see, or zoomed in so you can see pretty well. Um. This is again our multimodal plan. So multimodal is that key buzzword, because it's not just a sidewalk, they could also be paths. This is for people that are um walking or bicycling or snow shoeing or, you know, skiing, anything. Um to have a path for them to connect from one place to another. So the green, this is where I have a hard time showing all of it at the same time, but the green are your existing sidewalks, the blue are existing paths. Um and then we put some proposed sidewalks and proposed paths in there. Most of that is to, was it connectivity is that big thing. The reason we we look at Fifth Street is that aligns with the um roadway capital improvement plan. If you're gonna go for a roadway improvement and get a grant, you're gonna also want to put the sidewalks in at the same time with that same package. So those, that's, those roads are also highlighted here to have that connectivity for both parts. For the road and then sidewalks and our paths. With this plan, we do have shown both sides of the street as part of the plan. There's a difference of having a plan and executing aren't always the same, and that I'm very much aware of that, and it's dependent on funding. Um but we thought it was better to put them in there to start out with. You get money for it, and it's funded through a program um outside of city funds. I think it would be great, and that's where some of those um details can be adjusted at that time. And then we also should in here the the beacons that you've pushed, you know, to cross the street, so make sure those are also in here um in this plan. Do you have any questions about this map, since I know this one is a new one for you? Then the last one, I might have to zoom out a little bit, or at least show you a part of it. Um. So we had talked about a maintenance plan really for all all of the roads within the city's um jurisdiction. And if u- using the current funding of roughly fifty thousand a year. To do just a chip seal, that's not any other kind of road improvement, just a chip seal. Um that one, um. Sorry, moving my figure, not meaning to, meaning to zoom over here. So if you only use that fifty thousand, it'll take approximately twenty-two years to get through all the current streets that you have. To chip seal, which is um challenging, it's challenging to keep roads in. Acceptable condition with twenty, twenty-two years between each of those maintenance. Um. If you can increase that funding to roughly a hundred thousand, this is roughly, because you. Yeah, oil prices change, you know, all of that. So if you can do that to about roughly a hundred thousand a year just for the maintenance. That takes it into twelve, twelve years. If the funding can increase to roughly a hundred and fifty just for maintenance, that gets you roughly eight years. For each rotation, which um on a, on a roadway perspective, we try to recommend every seven to nine years. To do a chip seal to maintain just for maintenance um on roads. Part of why I bring it up this way is that I do know, like, so I have down here this other figure, like, so this is whole. Figure would better when you got, you know, big. Um. But where these costs come from, um isn't that this first part when you have initial road? Any of a, um that cost of repair is cheaper. To keep doing chip seals versus you start rebuilding and reconstructing, it costs a lot more. And I am here to support. The city and what the city would like and need. And one thing that um. I believe you need is more funding for your roads. That doesn't mean that's your critique on how the city council has things set up. Or anything else, it's a statement of fact that you could use funds, you could use funds for your roads, which is something we had talked about last time when we did the assessment. Like, we know where your roads are. So some of this figures to help in that public meeting, trying to um. Communicate that to the public on why it would be really great to support any kind of extra funding that. Whether it's taxes or things, things like that to support the city's growth. So that was my point of all of this, and I, I think you could spend up, and I put in this bottom two, so that's that fifty thousand, that hundred thousand, that hundred few thousand. And it's my understanding that the current um snow plowing is a maximum of sixty thousand per year. Uh and so a- as a budget-wise, there's a lot of other things in your budget that the city also. Has expenses for, like I'm hearing your um. Your, your sewage cleanouts and stuff, right? Like, there are. So if there's other things that I can do to help promote. Increase funding, let me know. And now, I have any other questions, would be great, too.
Thank you. I think the information about the uh chip seal maintenance costs, those estimates are very helpful and eye-opening. So I, I appreciate those figures. Any questions from council from Maria?
I think so, too. Maybe we never really had the opportunity to schedule chip ceiling. We know that's the cheapest route to maintaining a road. Uh. It's, it's, it's refreshing to get that, that number.
Maria, I have a question in regards to this. With just small towns in general with large sprawl and upkeeping that infrastructure. Do you see any communities going to gravel, going back to gravel because of how expensive things are?
Um. I would say, I I'd like to be honest, probably not. Um so once you start putting your road back to gravel, if you have just gravel. There sometimes can be more maintenance, and that maintenance comes on you as the city that has to go out there. You get that first rainstorm, man, you've got one little pothole. You second rainstorm, now you have a huge pothole, and you have to regrade that, constantly regrading it. Versus a chip seal, yes, you can have a pothole, fill that pothole with that pothole, and. I would say in theory, because it depends on how it was formed, right? But those potholes are usually last, say, say, full or completely filled in. Longer than you're having to go out and actually reblade and regrade a gravel road. Then you have the gravel itself, when you put it on there, it will start sliding out to the sides, you have to have a grader that brings it back in. I mean, the, the theories are there. Um. Then you have dust control, like there's other parts in here that it seems simpler, right? Um. But is the dust control also part of that plan? Um there are some that put mag chloride down, which can help with dust, but sometimes the mag chloride only lasts you one season. So now you have this maintenance that you're putting on, and I can't see the exact cost per mile of that one. Um but then you have that seasonal, like every year, you're having to put that on there to maintain your dust control, too. So honestly, it's a great question. I mean, I'm not saying it's not possible, it's just there are, either maintenance carts come with it.
Yep, just curious, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, could I get copies of the GIS files, please?
Absolutely. I believe I have them, give, I've given them to Brian, but some of these updates, as we try to update to make our. Maps look a little better and cleaner. Um I'll make sure that he has it if you're able to get him from him. Does that work?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I wanted to communicate that um open house that Maria was referring to is our transportation plan of open house. Um it's at five P M. This Wednesday, September tenth. Uh went out in the newsletter, it's on the website as well. Um so that, I just want to make sure, Tony, that you have that information. Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Where is that happening here?
Here at City Hall. Yes, and council members, you know as well.
And may I ask either for clarification or clarify, just because it's public. That I know it shows snow plowing per year costs sixty thousand. That's really just what we're budgeting for subcontractors, that's not truly our cost. When we consider everything that we've acquired to be, I just wanted to clarify that, so that no one thinks we're only spending. Sixty thousand a year to plow snow that costs us more than that.
What's your contract would be?
Yes, I just want, I wanted to clarify as a question, and maybe then clarify, kind of say.
Would you like that clarified on here better? Because one, I don't, I don't want risk misrepresentation by anybody. This is a poster thing that you guys will have. I can change that and put snow plowing.
Just the contracted.
Contract.
Contractor costs per year. Not in, like, in asterisk, not including city specific um city crew costs.
I appreciate that. Again, I don't want to misrepresent you either. Part of my goal for putting the dollar amounts on there is to support any kind of um. Tax increases that people be more of like, oh, okay, so I see my taxes are going to help. Me be able to have my road better in front of my house, it's pretty once every twenty-two years, or whatever, you know.
Um Tony Evans in here has a question for you. Is it from Maria or for us?
Well, it's all addressed to mayor.
Okay.
So I could use to get this information, which was not in the public packet. And um Maria left a message today, but I don't know that she's gotten it in time. And my deadline's tomorrow morning. So if you could just make a reminder right now to. Contact me and send me this information, but it'll be timely.
That is awesome. I appreciate that follow-up. Um so for me personally, unless I'm directed by the city, we prefer that it comes from the city. And I have given that to uh the, I've emailed it to the clerk and to uh Brian as well. Uh just shortly before this meeting, because I was out some last week, so I was trying to put things together to make sure you had it. So if you can ask from them, that would be, that would be great.
So Amy will follow up with you, Tony. So Tony, you've got the information. Thank you, and thank you, Maria, for clarifying that. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, I look forward to seeing everything large on Wednesday, but Tom's.
Maybe this could wait till Wednesday, too, I guess, but um. Chip sealing extends the life of a road, as I understand it, that that's kind of the point of chip sealing.
Right.
Do you have to have a road of a certain quality before chip sealing?
Good question.
That is an awesome question, so. Yes and no. There are other districts that we work with, too. And how they build their road is they start with something that's very similar to a chip seal. And they put them down like a a chip seal, then they come back and do a second chip seal, and that is how they have. In a cost-effective way, started to build a road versus um. Putting in a correct base structure and then putting like a hot mix asphalt on top. That I know that you've seen it in the um, the northern section of this neighborhood. This neighborhood up here, this slaughterhouse, gulch area up there, that is how I'm assuming those roads were built, was that a base. A hot mix asphalt on top, right? So that structure on that. Um it is, to me, it's very important to keep those roads maintained with those chip seals, because. Once you, once you pave it and then shortly after put a chip seal, like on like a year or two, you're sealing that in. You're making sure the water's not supposed to get underneath and down into the base. It keeps those roads strong for a very, very long time, like regular maintenance. Regular chip seals on those roads. Um your other roads in the main core, yes, we are all aware that they are not built the same way. Um so having a chip seal in there is close to a Band-Aid to keep it there as best you can at this moment. Um it, it lengthens that length of time between now and when, let, if we had millions of dollars and can redo roads. It would be great, right? But we all know that we don't have that. So putting that chip seal on there tries to help keep them together, like, again, like a Band-Aid to keep it together as long as possible. To keep it from unraveling, like there are um resources that talk about how that keeps it long term. Even if it keeps it from falling apart in four years, it could be worth it that if it falls apart this year in the winter, you're going to, could be spending more money to re. Or patch this road in the middle of winter, when you can't do anything much more than that until the next year, right? So. Yes and no. It'd be great to have all the roads in a really awesome condition to start out with, but this is where we're at. And to try to start with the roads that are the. Best-built roads to start with your chip seal is the best way to start, which is why. In this twenty-two-year plan, we started with those roads to begin with. Um. Just because we put this plan together in twenty-two years or less than that. If that's the plan is to come back and chip seal these roads versus the ones that are on year twelve instead. Then, then that's some of those um. then then that's some of those um guidance and needs to be picked up at that moment, too. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Yes, it'd be great to have perfect roads, but we know where you're at and we're trying to help preserve as much as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Because we've heard, I think, in the past, that says, well, the underlying condition of this stretch of road is so poor, it's not worth doing that. And and so that was kind of why the question. Thank you. I appreciate your response.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, come back, ask ask more on on Wednesday.
Any other questions for Mariah while we have her on Zoom? Thank you for all your work on this and um we really appreciate it, Mariah, and we look forward to seeing you here on Wednesday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our second presentation, seven B, um comprehensive plan update. Brian Parker, community development director.
All right, thank you, Brian Parker, community development director. So we've been talking about this for a while now. We've got an advisory committee and we've had a few agenda on conference plan uh thus far, but we haven't had one since. We've really gotten the advisory committee up and rolling and been doing work on it, so I protect. Uh. So I put a whole bunch of documentation in your packet. Uh. As you're going to run through this in PowerPoint. What would you our current plan will be adopted in twenty seventeen. There have been a couple of small amendments since then, but that was the last time it was substantially updated. Uh. Generally, we transition every five to ten years. Uh. So it's about time. Um. It is the it's the official guideline for how cities for one ball. So with that, you have to put some objectives together uh that are in your scope or document. Uh. First one is that it's realistic, sustainable. Uh. Second is reflective of current and likely future conditions. Third, it meets all the requirements of Lupa, that's but that's really small. You're feeling big. There we go. Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's slightly larger, still very small. Uh. There's a whole bunch of things that Luba requires us to uh look at. Uh. Not going to leave the ball, but they're all there and they're amazing company. And but uh so then we have uh the existing comprehensive plan, the stuff that we like and find that would be useful and still a valid and useful, we're going to move along and hopefully kind of update the implementation as needed so that it actually gets done. Um. And then we're gonna, you know, sure that we are aware that we are not above, we're not an island, we're a living or region, it's our effects have consequences on other communities and vice versa. And then uh this is a little more for me than anybody else. We're gonna do as much of this as open source and or cheap software uh so that other communities can uh take advantage and kind of use our resources uh to even give me a model for uh like sorry, timeline, we are aiming for spring of twenty twenty seven. There is a more detailed, but still very blurry and intentionally hard to read timeline in your still work uh that uh don't expect that to fall into the T A potentially made it fuzzy, uh but that's the general concept. But so far, we started doing data collection and analysis and uh the first meeting engagement event, it was really this last weekend, Labor Day, we had a booth at the park. Uh. We had this big old forum up that we asked people problems at the top and then they fill in the chalk. Uh. Pretty fun. There was a scavenger hunt that, as mentioned, Jessica's children are very excited about. And I encourage you guys all to go do it and learn a little bit about city, tell your friends, go do it. There was in your packet and in boxes up front. Uh. But yeah, so moving to the form of engagement, we're doing more events uh with the community. I am doing a a media club, like a book club, but it's gonna be a little more, let's add podcasts and new articles about things that are next trip to books. Uh. The first survey is open, is existing conditions. Uh. It's pretty, I mean, for an adult, we less than five minutes, so very easy for people who are involved with it to take it. Uh. I'm going to update the survey every month, uh so do it quickly before it goes away. Uh. It's giving me different team every month. These weird phones, if you've seen them in my office and or scattered around, uh I have all parts and borrowed uh the phone which was in front of Atkinson's. And I'm going to be organizing it up to you can pick it up and it'll ask you a question and you leave voice mail. Uh. And then I will also just be setting up where I'm down at Atkinson's and the restaurants and coffee shops and such, and just let people talk to me. Uh. Things that I don't have on here is I have a youth advisory council uh that I'm working on forming with the uh high school students. Um. So if any of you guys have some youths that you want to offload for a couple hours, I'd throw them through. They're a little young. I mean, they're they're right, they keep up. Uh. But yeah, so high school students, developing residents, uh so yeah, if you know anybody, please send them away. Uh. We have the advisory committee. There's one other thing that I feel like it was meant that I was reading about. Uh. But yeah, lots of engagements, opportunities, and I really want to be a land created by and adopting and to tell us what they really want is in. Uh. So with that, I'll stay up for any questions.
Will there be any information about it on Wednesday? Also, such transportation and those things are um or some sort of activity or anything else that if people show up for the transportation thing that where we use that?
I will pipe as best I can. I'm gonna try to keep the the open house focused on transportation plan. Uh. But yeah, it will be an opportunity to tell everybody when it comes to the door to also be involved. Did you get the dirt?
I really appreciate the creativity with your different levels of engagement. I think that the booth that Labor Day was highly trafficked. Um. And that just that start, you got a lot of great responses and engagement. Um. Seems like you got some signups for your planning media club. Yep. That's just good.
Just general email list as well.
I'm excited about the phones and phone booths. I think that's a very creative engagement touch that I think um once the word gets out there, I think between that.
I don't think they know how to use it.
Just pick it up. Say all over.
No, you pick it up.
It's pretty intuitive. When we were in the like, when we were traveling, the girls saw a payphone and they're like, oh, they wanted to try to figure out how to use it.
I saw our uh great facial that families now are going back to the old phones. If it gives way uh this smartphones, eight, nine, or ten, and you don't need to use those things. And it's it's really cool. It was, you know, it was it's quite a learning experience with his kids. It's like, wow. Now, you know. I know it. Your phone to my favorite.
May I ask, and maybe this I missed this. Because the comprehensive plan was put in place in twenty seventeen and there were goals and objectives, you know, there were things that were outlined in
Implementation.
Well, they were outlined and if some of it was implemented, right, some of it isn't. Has that actually been assessed or parsed out a little bit to see, one, if it still is applicable? And two, maybe what prevented it from, you know, assessing what might have been preventing it from being applied beyond the beyond the obvious of like, we don't have anyone. We didn't have anyone here doing it. But what may have been other contributing factors? Has that have have you looked at that?
Oh, yes, and uh you guys did as well a few months ago, right? And I went through it. I requested you guys score it and that request is still open. Then you guys have not completed your forms. It turns out to be uh and the advisory committee is doing that as well, and I am. And like I said, we're gonna kind of really take a deep dive and figure out what's good, what's no longer needed out of the existing land.
That's why this was more of a amendment rather than a full rewrite, correct, when we initially had discussed approaching this. So um I think it's really important. I think you did a good call out your roles and responsibility. Um. That line here about the the plan should be based on needs and desires of developing residents while being realistic about the implementability of the goals expressed, but I think a lot of these outreach um elements I hope will draw the public in so that they feel that they very much are being heard um what their their needs, wants, and desires are for um for this. And I would say, please, you know, I'm happy to bring updates back as much as council would like. Um. I know this is a this is a process, but um however, council members can and myself can support you and engagement um and getting the word out there. Uh, I just want to make sure that whatever we're bringing to the table is a is a good reflection of community engagement and involvement. So thank you for all your creativity on your outreach.
Has the social media been done for the coming town hall for Wednesday?
It's in the newsletter. I sent Christina the like graphics for so.
Kristen.
Yeah, that's my
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Uh. I don't I've not seen it come across my feed, but I'm also not the most observant on the internet. Uh. So I'll check it.
We follow up there. Okay, perfect.
I'm checking now because that'd be helpful because then if we already shared it, it's like the main app to the rest, so.
Any other questions for Brian on um his confident update?
Great work.
Thank you.
Tony, yes?
Quick question. But is that um a word that they're part of the program to plan? Project?
Yes, I was up at Labor Day uh and we'll probably get repurposed or something and figure out.
Did I get a picture of you in front of it before you erased it?
Yeah.
Just that you may be a good photo for story.
The chalk is over there. If anybody would like to add to it, looks
In time.
And Tony, he changed the jobs throughout the time, so it got erased and added to. And I do think Brian took some photos as well.
And you could get on the others.
Yeah, okay, sounds great.
A quick photo of the meeting.
Yeah, that sounds great. Uh. It was kind of fun. It's like the way people interacted with it. It's it's been nice to see the different mediums in which engage people. So I I like this one a lot. Thank you. We have no other questions. We'll move on to new business. Thank you, Brian, for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
New business item A. Um. This is eight A, consideration approval of resolution number twenty five dash twenty six, authorizing the treasurer to establish an LGIP, sorry, to establish an LGIP capital account with the Idaho State Treasurer's Office and to transfer funds in the amount of twenty seven thousand four hundred forty eight dollars to said fund for future water capital improvements. Shelley Schumaker.
Yes, this is key as a request from our public works director. We have received um the equivalent of twenty percent of um an award from a settlement. Um. I did attach that paperwork in your packet. And so there's going to be more funds and he requested that we set these funds in their own account. And they will earn interest so that they'll be ready for future projects. So this is to open that account for me to do that.
Uh. I had some questions about where people were finding information about this three M settlement and the P F A's or A S's, which I recall you referencing when we had pizza and politics um that were found in the chestnut and Shantrell wells. And if this money is for testing and mitigation, why is all the money? How is what is the testing mitigation as part that we're doing and what why are we putting all the money away or how do you how do you manage that? Where can people find out more information about this um contaminant in those two groundwater sources?
So back in I want to say it started in twenty twenty two, um D E Q offered all municipalities, it started at a certain level up to a population of fifteen hundred or something. Nobody was going after it and offered all public water systems the ability to come test for PFOS. I suggested to our water system at the time when I was on council that they take advantage of the free testing um given our location um of where our delineations for those wells are. At that time, we went into what's called U C M R five is unreg- unregulated um contaminant um version five. These are thirty contaminants that EPA says they're not currently regulated, but we're looking at them and they could be possible health concerns. And out of that thirty lithium was one and there are twenty nine variations of PFOS. Um. With the PFOS that was detected, we did two samplings, a spring and a fall. Um. They were barely detectable, but they did detect both wells. Um. And they were outside of the twenty nine PFOS PFOA on the U C M R five. Um. I then directed the water team to go ahead and file for this uh litigation that was going through. Uh. We followed all our steps. We submitted our samples, we did our secondary samples, and we got this alert. There's not having everything put in the one uh one pot of money and put into an LGIP to gain interest. Um. There hasn't been any guidance on what exactly they expect us to do with it. Um. I'm expecting that they want to see some sort of preventative or see some sort of thing. Uh. Right now, we're continuing testing. Uh. We haven't had another hit in the last year, um last two years that I'm aware of. But we want to continue to monitor um as our groundwater levels change, as the flows change, as we use the wells more. Uh. It's going to be seasonal. As we're going to a drought, it could have an effect on how quickly the PFOS reaches us and where exactly it is coming from. We go into that for words. So until we have more guidance on where they want us, I'll put it um since it's unregulated, we're not required to do anything. Uh. But I'm just trying to set us up that we are paying a moderate, understanding our levels and having that so we can mitigate it if we have to.
Okay, I'm sorry. So where can residents get information about this?
Right now, the information will come from the uh consumer confidence reports. I think it was mentioned in the twenty twenty two. I mean, this is again before um I I wasn't responsible for this, so. I will find the documentation.
No, you don't. I I kind of meant what we're reproviding, not that you have to go dig it up. I can easily do that. That's not a problem. I mostly just meant what was currently available, what were we sharing with residents about where the source of this money as well as something that was found in the water that qualified for us. So thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
And this this account will be specific for just these funds. No other funds will go into this.
Correct.
This is that type of fund where you found that last year money had been put into this type of fund for one of the enterprise funds, right? This type of LGIF. You have last year, right?
Multiple LGIFs.
This is a distinct one from the other.
Yeah.
Do you remember that she found?
What's what's the advantage of putting it into this account? Just generates more interest?
It generates interest. Where it is right now, it doesn't.
And and it dedicates it to Christmas, boy. If we got a letter that says we need to do something specific for mitigation purposes, we have at least set aside funds and they haven't been wrapped into any other capital improvement or spend in any other way. So, yeah, well, it it's prudent for us, especially something like that.
And all the LGIP funds are are readily accessible. They're just like a savings account.
Yeah.
I feel. Yeah.
I feel savings.
Because they do earn good.
Yeah, we've done well.
Yeah.
The only comment I might make about the resolution is uh it's helpful to kind of spell out the A F F F, for example, you know, like in the letter that the attorney sent, they sort of referred to it and then they put it in parentheses. But maybe for someone like me in this instance, who's not familiar with the details, spelling out those this is kind of helpful. LGIP. LGIP. I don't know what that means either, honestly, um, and, and so.
I guess I didn't because aqua stone forming foam doesn't mean anything to me either.
Well, I, 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 I appreciate that. I, I appreciate that.
Maybe we should get that.
It's multi-carbon chain, um, anything larger than six carbon chains becomes a, what's called the furor chemicals. Um, certain ones will have up to, I think, fourteen to twenty um, carbon chains into them. More carbon chains, the harder they are to break down. Um, and I have no idea exactly which ones tested um, a trace for, but uh. Yeah, all I know is they weren't in the thirty in the current UCMR five, that's regulated by for that case. He said it was the lithium. Lithium is a, is the thirtieth chemical that they're looking at to see how it affects water systems.
And I can certainly spell that out in here. I just would like to get the funds in there earning interest.
Good, and so with to that point, could the resolution be drafted in such a way that this isn't just another capital improvement for the water project? This is that, should we also detail it? That it is, these funds are being held till such a time.
I think the intention here is to hold them there, but since it's not regulated.
True, okay, it's not, I mean. If you did put something that said that, I said, I would say something to the attempt, but. Um, the priority of these funds would be for mitigation or remediation until a date certain of. When they can be used for something else. Until things comes out that I don't.
I'm trying to keep it as, as um, I guess loose by just stating future water capital improvements. If you get very narrow, you are absolutely tied to that forever and ever and ever.
Yeah, and I wasn't really trying to. I am, and maybe this wasn't what Tom was picking, dropping down, but what I'm picking up is. Three years from now, because PFOS and all of this is really tough, like these things are really up and coming. That I don't want three years from now, council, whoever's sitting on the council and whoever's sitting anywhere. To just go, oh, look, we, we have an extra thirty thousand dollars in water funds and we spend it. And then they finally get some litigation come through and say, now, you need to mitigate this way. And so I'm just trying to figure out how do we, how do we keep a paper trail connected to it so that then. It doesn't get lost in the weeds three years from now. Cause three years is gonna go by like that. But it's my only, and I'm not saying that's what you're trying to say, but I, I was picking up on something. So.
I'm kind of, it sounds like there will be more, right? It's gonna be coming along too. Uh, the second larger payment.
Yeah, I believe it was a twenty percent and then like a sixty percent and then another coin.
Yeah, it's gonna be eleven plus dollars. You need to chunk the money.
I would recommend that you feel that it would be helpful to be more specific about where you receive them. Strictly from the point of view of document search. So that if you look up something about three M, you would actually, without even having to properly, and, and so, and that, that would. Be something that you might consider helpful and, and not even having to file these types of things, but to have them immediately. Um, reference back through, you know, for CR, that would be. And I think to your point, considering what your protocol is with this money, I don't know that you have to necessarily squeeze it all into the one resolution. You could maybe have us another resolution that deals with. How you're gonna use the funds. Is that, is that possible that you can amend that after getting the money in there and saying, okay, we've created this? And then it can be, it should be managed in this way to Tammy's point, but it is there for potential mitigation and. That is a, a discreet task. Or do you think it all has to be in this?
There might be future revisions to how this is allocated.
Yes, just that, that you've created this fund and then that you address that fund.
Well, at this point, there, there is, there are no parameters on this.
Right, right, that's what I mean.
So received, so I think it's wise that Chris has asked for us to just put it in an account and.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I thought.
But we don't wanna tie our hands, should they never make us do anything with that money if it's tied to a specific. Task, then um. Somehow we would have to change. I've not seen where any use of an LGIP fund has changed and how that. Has to be done or can be done.
Look, Rick, I think to the question is, if we keep it in a capital improvement fund, so it's general, but then can we tie something to this resolution? A second resolution that says this will be held until a date certain or, or date, so it can't be used for something, but just internally. Just leave LGIP out of it. Internally, we set aside so a future council, next year's council can't spend that money on a, a water slide.
Yeah, exactly, differentiate, just let you do your thing, but is there a possibility later to?
Well, I don't, I don't know, but you get to bind future councils' hands. I mean, it's your money, you guys can do what you want with it, right? And I, I see this as a settlement. From three M. As a right now, we can do whatever we want with it. Um, so I think then you guys. What the time comes, if you wanna change the purpose of where you're going to put it, it's mitigation, mitigation or just wanna put in new. Something completely different to the water system.
Right now, the language is for future water capital improvements. So this is the resolution in front of you, council. Um, if this is one you'd like to move forward with, or if you'd like it to be changed, but.
I think it would be helpful to identify it specifically, so we are looking at what account it is that you're putting your money out of, you can. Like Suzanne said, and relate it back to where, you know, it's coming from.
It's gonna be labeled the A F F. Uh, LGIP account, it's the name will tie to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Labeled where?
Labeled on the account, in my files, on the state side.
Just curious.
Labeled.
Just curious.
Just like the street's capital is labeled.
She said we have multiple LGIP accounts.
Yeah, we have multiple accounts.
And this is the three M A F F.
Yeah.
Vivian Dupont, A F F.
Exactly.
And, and then I've, I've gone through this one more time. We're gonna get more funds. Do we just? Is it, is it a resolution that says we will transfer the funds received in this? Instead of it being stuck to a dollar amount, cause then do we have to do a resolution? I'm just saying, we'll, we'll have to do a new resolution every time we receive funds to transfer those funds in every.
Um, I have the intent of just putting any future funds in there because we're creating the account for this purpose.
But if we receive that, you have to have. We are gonna give you permission.
Only for this.
Oh, no. I know.
Nothing else.
I just wanted to make sure that, do we need to include, should we include that, any funds received from this settlement?
Add on.
Or just add that off.
Amount of weekend.
Any future account or any future funds, yeah.
Yeah.
Not a number just per this AFF.
Yeah.
No, no specific number is what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. Or this number and anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this. But Tammy, I feel like you might be able to. Put something out there.
Yes.
When it's the morning.
So. And transfer the funds received in the amount of twenty-seven, four, forty-eight, fifty-three. And, and any future funds received from the three M AFF. Litigation settlement for the purposes of future water, water capital improvements.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
Said it.
And I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-six with those adjustments amended. As, yes.
Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Ovina. Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Manami.
Yes.
Yeah. Item nine, old business. This is the consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash ten and ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Idaho. Amending Bellevue City Code by adding a new chapter to title four, health sanitation and environment. To control nu- nuisance weeds and providing an effective date of the ordinance upon passage, approval and publication coming to law. Brian Tucker. Please.
Thank you, Brian Tucker, community manager. It's been for you guys a few times and we've got the finalist, I hope, version today in the packet, uh, so. Uh, if you guys have any more questions of what we're talking about, uh, from last week, uh, happy to answer.
Uh, I'll ask you again how this has become a priority and to be presented in three separate meetings. That strictly deals with uncompliant residents who have dry vegetation. What percentage of our population is that? Twenty percent, point oh five percent?
I don't know.
This question was answered, it's a priority because it was in the fire chief and the committee of velvet and director strategic plan for the year. As one of the ordinances that they wanted to bring forward, it's come a third time because of a mistake on the second time. Um, and it was an important, some apartment, important adjustments that were made to it from time one and time two. But that's how it's been a priority. It's, was on two staff members, uh, strategic planning, uh, initiatives for this year. Anything, Tom?
Um. Pardon me, I just. Put your whole mouth, sorry.
Okay. Well, we can come back.
I got away here for a minute. But on, on line twenty-one, I, I think it's any property within the city, maybe just a little, a small little edit on, on that. Um, that's tight in, I think, that, that line. Um. I think this is, um, this is certainly much better. I, I feel better about this than I did the initial versions, which I thought were much too broad. And, and kind of created too much of a concern about what's a nuisance and maybe even neighbors arguing over what's a nuisance and. And trying to sort that out and, and this, as I read it at least, says as determined by the fire chief. So you have someone, you know, in the city that's kind of saying, yeah, this is a risk or it's not a risk. Making some judgment about that and that might. That might be better for the neighborhood to have that kind of arbiter, if you will, engaged here. Um. I, I can see some instances like maybe downstate, for example, in Glen Aspen, if there are lots down there where that. You have cottonwood trees and, and riparian vegetation. And I know down in that neighborhood, there have been arguments about, you know, the, removing that vegetation and, oh, we gotta clean it out cause it's a fire risk and. And star weather, there was a big debate between the homeowners association and neighbors there about cleaning out the neighborhood to make sure there was no fire after the. The Beaver Creek Fire, um, so, you know, kind of what's a risk can be a challenge to determine. And what's repairing and needs to stay and what's a weed and maybe needs to go, it can sometimes be a challenge to evaluate, but. This is much narrower and therefore much better, I'd say.
So only last thought I had in this and reviewing this then. Um, is then the city going to start managing all of the weeds and the public right of ways? Or is that on the owner? Then because right now, no one manages in front of my home. With those weeds and nuisance weeds that grows, so even though that's city property. Like, is that part of the strategic plan in this? Okay.
I think this has been updated to. Have the responsibility of, by a property owner be limited at property line and then the city will be maintaining.
Be taking over everything else, great.
And I have had a discussion with this with Casey and it's, um, you know, working into kind of the management plan. Um, for the city assets team and they have been very responsive when um, citizens have called in about. Dry vegetation, vegetation and weeds that need to be managed, so.
Great.
Um, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, some of it could expand on this to cover both public and private property. So people call in and saying, we apply the law equally, whether it's the city that fails to comply or it's the resident that fails to comply on private property. Versus who met the owner of the property, being the city at points, that it should, we should apply the ordinance equally to the property owners. So if people call in and say there's this dry vegetation from my home on the right way and it's not maintained. Then the city can suffer the same fate as the resident.
So who gets to go to jail for six months?
You know, I can't imagine anyone's going to jail for weeds, but.
Well, that's healthy if we're gonna apply equally, Suzanne, so I don't know.
Well, I think that brings up, but I think, right, that brings up the point, right? Should anyone be going to jail for dry weeds? It's, now I'm just trying to look at the parity.
I think that that's, the, the misdemeanor is not, pardon me, if I'm wrong, Marshall, is not the first.
No, that's usually the.
It's usually notifications, communications. Um, and so the city does give that courtesy to all its citizens and in multiple ways. Um, and so I think the, the city would receive the same courtesy of a. I, a citizen did call in and say, what's going on with those weeds in that right of way? Called Casey, they got taken care of, so.
And if.
Huh?
If they didn't, would the city be paying a fine if they stuck to a certain point?
City doesn't pay fines.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just saying, don't you think we should apply a responsibility?
I don't really understand how that works.
Not, not a, not a responsibility to maintain equally, is all I was suggesting, that we apply this.
The city provides services, the city maintains the public right of way. It is the responsibility of the city. If a citizen is not happy with how the city is maintaining. These weeds, they can call in, report an issue, um, and, and it will be taken care of. Because that's what the city does, they provide these services. So I don't, I, it, it's. It's, I think, it's been asked and answered in multiple ways, but.
Uh, right, can you answer a question for me? Just, I have a lot in general, like, how come we have, like, how come we have to? Do a misdemeanor, why can't we just assert a fine with these rather than a penalty?
I, I have that already in our system.
You can do an infraction, it's just a fine.
I want, I want the marshal, yeah. Finish this up, cause we do have.
Already have that in place. It, it's classified as a misdemeanor here, but we have another. Section that I would like to, if I told you off the top of my head, what it is, but it's our civil penalty, so we don't have to cite. As a misdemeanor, we can cite it as a civil penalty, which is, for the first offense is a hundred dollars. And it's when it goes up at a hundred bucks each time. Um.
I believe we voted that into place in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-four.
It would have been twenty-three. And. I'll be honest, I, I have yet give the citation out for the two hundred dollar is always. If we go that route, it's usually the first offense, say it's never an issue again. But that, again, is usually the second or third time you've had a conversation. It's not the first go-to. So just for your guys' knowledge.
But you can decide that you don't wanna admit a misdemeanor. That was just.
Yeah, I.
I put that penalty provision, it's the most, you've got the biggest range of things to, to work with people and nobody's. Gonna go to jail on their first offense, but.
Well, my, yeah, I guess my question, thinking about time for you, because it does say a misdemeanor. If it is a civil penalty, you as an officer, do you feel more comfortable giving a person a fine then? Because how many, like, three, if you have to go to a home three times, you're going out there and obviously we want trust. In, in, with our officers, but like. The amount of time you have to go to a home because it says misdemeanor over a civil penalty that starts at a hundred. So I think just like more thinking about time, resources, what we're spending your money on, like, hey, we'll give you a warning next time it's a ticket. I'm sorry, like, we are a business. But we also have to have relationships, but if everything, I've just noticed on all of our ordinances, it says misdemeanor, misdemeanor, misdemeanor. And if it's like taking more times for you to go out there to get something enforced for them to change their behaviors. Yeah, it's just a question. Would it be more helpful for you, so it wasn't a misdemeanor, to have one conversation?
No. No, the only reason I say that is having the ability to do a misdemeanor is always good. In case we have that person and, my gosh, I'm not gonna take this weed down, that's my favorite weed. My gosh, I'm not going to take this weed down. That's my favorite weed. It's dry and I love it and it's going to sit next to my fence forever. We need something that we have some teeth on and if we just the hundred dollars. For, forever and ever. Most, like I said, most of the time to issue the one hundred. The one hundred dollar civil penalty and it's usually a bracket fine.
Are you guys can make it a minimal fraction for the first offense? Second stance, misdemeanor, third stance.
The code section one four one that is referenced in this ordinance includes the option of infraction.
Well, I mean, this, the way it's written, it's a misdemeanor, which is a certain thing, it's. Misdemeanor is defined as six months in jail and up to a thousand dollars. It's not defined as an infraction, so.
And, and the.
Want it to be an infraction, you need to call it an infraction.
And then what's the penalty if you get?
Up to three hundred dollars, whatever you guys want to, uh, it's defined. Punish by only a penalty not exceeding three hundred dollars, exclusive of court costs. So you guys could decide it's a fifty dollar fine, a hundred dollar fine, two hundred dollar fine.
So can, can you clarify then how the civic penalty portion of the code cannot be elected? When most of our ordinances, like as discussed, the margin said, have the misdemeanor violation on them. And then we enacted the civic penalty section, we added that to the code as an opt.
That's different from the infraction that you're speaking.
Okay.
The, the civil penalty is certainly a city, we track all of that. Um, what he is referring to is state infraction or it would be issued on a state citation, he would build in the courthouse. Um, on the civil penalty and everything is done in house to include the appellate process.
Which, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we enacted the civic penalty was. That it stayed within the city, correct? When we brought that forward. There was value to that.
Yeah, we never collected. We can do it that way, too.
As our code is written, with the fact that civic penalty exists and the way that this reads and reference that section of the code. Is that still an option? With the misdemeanor being the level of escalation that you could get to, but the civic penalty.
I think so, um. I mean. That's usually. By the time a person gets to the. Penalty portion of this, they've been given a notice. And ten days to abate the nuisance, because that's what this is, a nuisance. Now you have somebody that doesn't want to do it. I think the misdemeanor. Gives you more options and it provides a little more. Incentive to get your.
The language is there, but like, there's so many things that listed in our code that I am driving around the city of Bellevue. But nobody is following that misdemeanor rule, so our language and what we're delivering to our city of like, well, we mean, when we say something. I don't know that this is serving us and that's the question.
And that's what I always feel like, we need to be really careful when we're passing ordinances, because if we don't have the ability. To enforce them, why go to the time and trouble, three meetings now? To, to put something in place that, that's going to be very, very cumbersome. For us to enforce. I, I do want to, to paint another scenario when it talks about in line twenty-six. The owner, tenant or occupant of a private property, so. We are going, we have a senior population. Um, every community does, but say you've got somebody that just is unable to. Deal with these weeds. Um, they're a tenant, their landlord doesn't care. They, they're elderly and they're unable to. Pay for somebody to come and do it or do it themselves. That, that's just another scenario that, that concerns me with, with this legislation, this ordinance, I guess.
I think we can just strike tenant or argument from that. You know, it's a lower property owner. If they have an agreement with their, let's see. That's on them to enforce.
But if they own the property, it'll depend there on the.
Yeah.
That's.
Right.
Because that would make property owners a lot more accountable.
You would hope.
I hope.
They already have, there's already a way to be able to find a sensation part?
There's ways for us to write civil penalties, not for this, but for other ordinance violations.
So at prison, you, we can't do anything about this, right? And until, until something is about to.
Can, can you help me understand how there's been discussion and discussion, discussion at this table in particular about equal application of the law? And now we're taking into consideration, which is understandable. Yes, we have elderly, yes, we have new families with. A mom with a new baby and yeah, it's hard for me and yes, it's hard for someone who's elderly. If we want equal application of the law. I understand we have citizens of all different backgrounds, some people who work. You know, Jessica talks a lot about people who are, you know, working a lot and can't get to things because they don't have time. I just think, I understand that we have a large expanse of citizens within this community. But equal application of the law has come up time and time and time again. So I just want to remind you that if that's something that this council has deemed as important. Then I do want to consider all citizens, but we also have to consider equal application of the law to all property owners, regardless of their situations.
And I would agree with that wholeheartedly and it's why doing one-offs like this is difficult, because. Things like this should be part of a larger, um, proposal, where we've considered some of the challenges that people have, that we've. Proper, proper time and just understanding how significant this is. We've spent, you're right, a lot of time on this and we've established that it may apply to point five percent of the population. And for that point five percent of the population, understanding why they are reticent, perhaps. Helps us narrow in exactly how we facilitate that. Maybe they are all unbelievably elderly and, and in wheelchairs, which means. To achieve this goal of removing noxious weeds, the best thing we could do is to say, hey. We're, we're going to come in, here's what's the problem and they, if that were our target, then they would say. Wow, that's so great. Thanks for taking care of that. I don't, we don't know who the target is, we don't know. What could be built around this to be supportive and so it looks like something that's standing alone in a vacuum. So that is the good application of the law is when you've looked at it to see how it can be applied equally. And that, you know, just like your great scholarships or something.
I, I want to call upon that. Can I ask how the department head, the fire chief and all his years of experience and his observations and his work with the community? Isn't just that, isn't just what you're talking about and going into understanding what the community needs. Uh, I mean, this is a strategic action of a department head. That was part of a greater plan this year, strategic plan. Part of that is emergency preparedness, part of that is, you know, planning for the future, for when things like that happen. How is a department heads planning for this and bringing it to council not planning? And taking all those things into consideration.
He, because his goal is to achieve his end, which is ideally, he'd probably eradicate as a fire chief, he would eradicate just about anything that was incendiary. And that would be a very reasonable goal for a fire chief. But when you look at it within a community, when you look at it within the diversity of a community. Then the group that's helping represent those residents may say, you know what, we totally understand you want to come on here with your lawnmower and mow everything. But it's, it can't work that way. Where's the common ground? And I understand that this is, it, it certainly didn't start as a common ground with the, with the takings idea, but. So that's why it doesn't always work, that they, that these guys are supposed to go for everything they can to meet their goal. And we're supposed to balance that goal with the other needs.
Which is exactly what we've been doing for three meetings. So I guess what I'm understanding is. The process that we've been going through is exactly what you just described, yet it's not the right.
Yeah, I got because it's hard to get there because we haven't, that we don't have enough information to.
The one thing I was saying is this ordinance is important. The only thing I question is the misdemeanor violation. The fire chief has recommended it, other communities do this, there's this one step closer to get to where we need. My only question was about the misdemeanor and the time said that our marshals have to go out there knocking on people's door.
I will back up one thing and say this is going to be a fire chief issuing, not a marshal issue.
Yeah, okay, great, okay.
And, and the only addition, I think that, that I would, uh. Ask is that, um, the owner and, and delete tenant or occupant of a private property.
Are other members of council in agreeance with that? So deletion of tenant or occupant?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
If, on the misdemeanor question, could we solve that if we just said guilty of an offense? Which I know is pretty general, but punishable as provided in section one four one, so if there's parameters within one four one that allow us to do a civil citation. Um, or an infraction or something besides a misdemeanor being the only kind of option.
And then after so many infractions.
I think you need to be a little more specific, kind of gives. Doesn't really give you what you, I mean, it gives you infraction parable by one, what it's assigned at. Is we don't, we just have a upper range on our infraction. I would. For due process purposes, I would like to see like, first offense should be punishable by a fine or. Two hundred dollars.
Great, let's go with that.
And then a second, subsequent offenses could be, it's that point, then you've got somebody that's really not. And I just wanted to add that this is something that's been deemed a fire hazard. It's not just, it's something. Saying this is, this is dangerous, um, ho- hopefully. You use this as judgment in a. In a way that we're only handling the really bad problems and not just somebody's got a drive and you don't decide. But if you want, you want to amend the penalty section to say first offense is two hundred, second offense is.
Can I ask if those numbers, the monetary numbers need to change though? Then are we coming back with a resolution to change it every, every time? So for example, when we do our fee assessments, are we say.
It's an ordinance and it's a criminal penalty, it has to be done by amendment.
Amendment.
Could we change, like, the, because it, it states misdemeanor, misdemeanor, you can get a fine about two. Was it the three?
One thousand.
One thousand or six months. And, um, so without stating actual dollar amounts. And we say the, that the penalties. Under this section that, that any person who violates any provision of this chapter shall first be. Uh, guilty of, or, or, yeah, guilty of a. Infraction, thank you. And then subsequent. Offenses of this chapter, of this chapter shall be punishable as provided in section one four one. Of this code and may be subject to, uh, misdemeanor penalties.
Yes.
So that then, and we don't attach any dollar amount to it, because then.
Well, a misdemeanor, it doesn't, it, a judge passes that on daunting, so they judge can find you fifty dollars. Or a thousand dollars, depending on how bad a person may think you are. And give you a prior re- record with the court, so, or they could put you in jail for no time or up to six months, so it's not. There's no, we can't say it's not, here's what, we can't find a judge a misdemeanor, so all we can do is save.
On your.
These are the potential penalties you might be subject to, um, or misdemeanor.
But as far as this ordinance goes, because then, well, how we usually do, to your point, we have an ordinance. And then we establish fees by resolution. And so then, if you already have.
This would be a fine, uh, a fee.
Okay, so then a fine of.
Which we, again, we have in a.
We can have a resu- then do a follow-up resolution that says if a person violates this. That at this point, the, the citations will.
Which we have in one dash four dash one under our civic penalty section.
You have your, that's what I was just going to say, is that where you.
That's what I've been trying to say, is that it, it exists in the code already. We passed it in twenty twenty-three. We have three. Levels of, of basically a one, two, three. Um, we haven't changed those, those can be changed in the future, but that kind of, that tiered penalty does exist in code.
Okay, so then all we have to do is, in this ordinance, is adjust that where it says penalties. And adjust and add the verbiage that the person who violates any provision of this chapter shall first be. Um, subject to civil penalties. And any such subsequent offenses may, instead of shall, may. Be subject to misdemeanor, a misdemeanor violation.
I think that's valuable in ordinance is moving forward, as I'm hearing discussed, so.
Well, that's why it's good to.
So does council have clarity of those two changes that were just brought to the table? The striking of the tenant, uh, and, um, or occupant and the addition of language that references the civil penalty.
In the civil penalty, instead of, we wouldn't use the word infraction, we would just say a civil penalty.
Yes, I think that's what it is.
My iPad might get so you don't have the code.
There we go, that's why we checked, thank you, civil fine.
So mayor, how would you like to proceed?
Um, if the council is comfortable, I think it would be valuable to put a motion on the table with those amendments.
Do a first reading.
And that's what the council.
Or.
Or the other thing.
You would either waive.
Yeah. Yeah.
Think this has come before council three times, so you can decide how you'd like this to go.
I make a motion, we waive the three readings of ordinance number ninety, twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Council President Shay.
Okay, so for video and auto, audio, um, we have a motion on the table from Tammy Davis. To move, uh, to waive the three readings of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten and read by title only. And there was a second from Diane Shay, Council President.
Okay.
Roll call.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
A member read?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember open up?
Yes.
The motion passes.
I make the motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten with. Uh, suggested amendments including. Line twenty-one, adding the word within instead of just with. And then line twenty-six, removing tenant or occupant.
tenant or occupant. And then updating the penalties section to include that a person who violates any provision of this chapter shall first be guilty of a civil fine.
Be subject.
Be subject to, be subject to a civil fine. And then on the on the first offense. And any subsequent offenses therein after may be punishable. May, you know, may be um yeah, found or may be punishable of a misdemeanor.
Second.
Member Odena. Yes, councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Moni.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, you're just read by the title, please. We need to do that, right?
Yes.
Please read by title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash ten. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, amending Bellevue's city code by adding a new chapter to title four. Health, sanitation and environment to control dry vegetation posing a fire risk and providing an effective date of this ordinance upon passage, approval and publication according to law. And then we need to make a motion to host. I mean, to publish this and also. I make that motion, sorry.
Second.
President Shay.
Yes.
With the number Bergen.
And this is to publish the summary?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Member Moni.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Peters.
Yes.
Councilmember Odena.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for working through that and everybody's discussion on it. We got to a good place. Um, it is at this time that I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We need to adjourn. Second, second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.